We'll open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 20th. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Introduction of members.
Steve Tringalli from Millville.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Venaco, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Toja Jarrett, Blackstone.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent of Schools.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. And our first order of business is recognition. We have... You wanted to start with the...
Well, I'm going to start with asking Dr. Kat Bosver to please come up. We were going to stand together, but Kat said she's much more comfortable sitting, so you get to do whatever you want to do tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome. I want to recognize Kat for a terrific honor that she just received, and many of us in the audience and at home know of her work for many years here at Millville Elementary School and on behalf of students in our district. It is our congratulations to Dr. Bosver, who has been named the 2016 Council for the Exceptional Children Clarissa Hug Teacher of the Year Award. She was nominated by her colleagues in Turks and Caicos from the Hope Foundation for Autism Awareness, for all of her hard work and for all of her diligence in building classrooms for their young children. On behalf of all of us here, on behalf of Dr. Hahey, Principal at Millville Elementary, and on behalf of the school committee and the entire Blackstone Millville Regional School District, we are excited and congratulate you on a job very well done. And there's more. Not many of us know, but the Council for Exceptional Children is the largest professional organization, international organization, dedicated to helping to improve the educational success of students with disabilities as well as exceptional and gifted students. And Kat was just informed just a few days ago that she was the recipient of this award. And just a quick background on this award, the CEC's Clarissa Hug Teacher of the Year Award recognizes a CEC member and teacher or provider who currently provides services to students with exceptionalities. The CEC Clarissa Hug Teacher of the Year Award is an outstanding member of the profession whose work exemplifies the best in special education teaching, and his or her work reflects the significant documented educational success for students, continued professional development, and the highest standards of educational quality. Those of us who get to work with Kat every day, and those of us who have had children who are lucky enough to have her, and those of us that have watched her work, know that she is a most worthy nominee and recipient for this very prestigious award. This award will be received at the award ceremony during the CEC's convention, April 3rd, in St. Louis, Missouri. She is invited, and the CEC will cover all of her costs to attend. There's also a cash stipend along with the press release, and she gets to attend the national conference and represent CEC in Washington, DC. She also gets to represent the Annual Teachers Hall of Fame Selection Committee and is a spokesperson for the Council on Exceptional Children to the media, and will consider invitations to speak at conferences and other events. This is not only a big deal, but it is so well-deserved by the work that Kat has done. And I may have to go over and ask you to stand up so I can just shake your hand, because I would like us all to give this young lady a warm round of applause for the recognition and for the work that she does so unselfishly every single day of the week. So, my congratulations.
I just want everyone to know that she is the only teacher in Millville so far that has had all four of my... I made sure it was fourth one, but the others rang.
Next on the agenda, we are very lucky to have the Charger Marching Band represented here. As many watching at home and many of us here know, I'm a fan. I'm not only the superintendent, I'm a fan. And we are so fortunate to have this group of students led by some terrific, terrific educators in the form of Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer, and Mr. Ireland, Mr. Martins, and so many volunteers that have put together just an incredible experience for our community, for all of our students. And we would like to recognize all of you for winning the national championship back in November at MetLife Stadium. And I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Schaefer, who was fortunate enough to take the band into the State House yesterday and had quite an experience. And I know that all of the students enjoyed the trip. And so, Mr. Schaefer, I turn it over to you and the band.
Don't start until they all...
Now they're going to be shy?
Without their instruments, they're a little bit zeroed out.
You can come on that side, too. You can go on the other side, too. There you go. There you go.
We'll figure it out. Yesterday, our trip to the State House, we were designated with an award of recognition by the House of Representatives, given to us by Representative Kuros. I just thought I'd read it quickly. It says, "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the BMR High School Band in recognition of winning the national band championship. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 19th day of January 2016 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker of the House, DeLeo, and Representative Kuros." It was great. Representative Kuros was very, very kind. He brought all the kids down into the House Chamber, had them sit at the desks that the representatives sit at, got up on the pulpit, made a very, very nice speech. And actually, Senator Fettman was also very, very kind to us. He brought us into the Senate chambers, places where you don't typically go on a normal tour. They actually interrupted the tours we were on and said, "No, no, no, we want to take you guys." So, it was a very nice welcoming that they gave to these students yesterday, and we're very fortunate to have the opportunity and experience, so it's a lot of fun. A little cold, but...
Well, before I let you all get back to homework, I can't thank you enough for your dedication, your teamwork, and your spirit of Charger pride that has certainly paid off this past year and will continue to pay off for you as you move through the grades at the high school and then on to what you do after high school. You have really, really made your entire community very proud of the work that you do, and to watch you week after week, starting in band camp, is just amazing to see what hard work and teamwork can accomplish. You are a terrific example for all of us. So, well done. Congratulations. Look forward to the next camp.
We also would like to let you know that we are in the process of purchasing jackets for the band members that have not acquired them yet, and then patches for everyone that has a jacket to honor that championship for you.
Thank you. Because we're asking, they were hoping.
They deserve it. It's very well deserved. So, please spread the word to the members that aren't here tonight.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it. We couldn't do without you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Thank you for coming. Okay, moving on, we have our first public forum. If there's anyone... Probably not. Moving. I already called the public forum. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Venaco. As you know, we're in the part two of a three-part series to present the needs and budget items for next year FY '17. This evening, we have Mr. Cameron and Mr. Dudek, our principals at the middle school and the high school, along with music and athletics, to answer questions and put forth their needs for next year. So, I believe Mr. Dudek leads off. And welcome, and thanks for being here. And welcome to Mr. Schaefer and Mrs. Tostie. Ms. Tostie, thank you.
I know you know that I love my PowerPoint, so we're just trying to get that together before we start. That may take a bit, but if you don't mind, we'll start with the presentation. Again, good evening. Thanks for having us here today. It's sort of a three-part series. I'll start by just introducing ourselves at the high school, what we've been doing. I'll have Todd Schaefer and Jill Tostie, who run our fabulous departments with music and athletics, to talk about their budget. I will allow them to be dismissed if that is okay with the school committee. And then I'll have my presentation along with Justin Cameron about the high school and middle school needs. So, I believe you have in front of you the budget summary or budget narrative, and then you also have six slides from the high school, probably more than what you need to read, but whenever you have the opportunity to read that, please do so. So, when you're looking at the first two slides or in reference, I have the high school vision and then our core values, those first two slides that you see in front of you. Again, I've put those in the last couple of years for the sole purpose of having us all understand that the budget here at the high school, thank you, so hopefully you could see that in our audience, just for the sole purpose that our budget is truly driven by our core values and our commitment to our beliefs and learning expectations. So, again, for those of you that can see that. So, again, the first slides provide us with the vision, our core values, and learning expectations that we have. So, I'm just going to fly through those. In terms of our current budget for the 2016 year, it supported several things for us at the high school. When we look at some of the several achievements that we've gone through for this year, one big thing that came up from last year's or this current budget was the AP Initiative, the Mass Insight Initiative, which was a $10,000 commitment for us from a fiscal standpoint. But we had several things that came out of that. We had greater PD opportunities for our teachers and faculty. This year, we had five teachers go to the AP workshop over the summer, four for pre-AP, which was a valuable PD opportunity for our teachers. So, now we have a greater number of AP teachers that are certified. Our AP sections went up from four to nine. Our qualifying scores from the prior year was 23, and it was... it has now increased to 47. And I think the most important piece, too, is that we have 90-plus students that are experiencing AP rigor classes. Last year, we had about 45. This year, we have 90, and our goal is to just continue moving up that ladder for our AP enrollment. Looking at our accountability status for the high school, we are a Level One school, which we're extremely proud of, which puts us at 65th percentile. So, we are the top one-third in the state at the high school. Student Council, again, these are just commitments from our budget, is a Silver Award recipient. We have multiple leadership positions that have come out from our student council. Eric Eisner, as you know, is the Mass State President, and we continue to send several of our students over to leadership opportunities and conferences with the support of our budget. Our marching bands provided us with a national championship, which we are extremely proud of. And I know it's... last year, when Todd was presenting his budget, he was looking for a few new instruments to upgrade, and I'm sure it wasn't just the instruments that got us that national championship, but we'll give a little, you know, 1% to that. We had a NIESK visit this year that we talked about the last couple of years. It was a positive NIESK visit. We are still awaiting the results from that, but I will say that some of the few highlights that they mentioned in that very brief presentation at the end was our positive school culture, commitment of our teachers, and the relationships that they saw with their students. So, hopefully that will be coming out shortly. We have an increase, of course, offerings from our robotics to an increase in our sciences with physics and chemistry. With that increase of that one position that we had in our science department, updates to technology. We have MacBooks that were purchased through some funds that we had. We have a new TV station that's being built with some cable money that we were able to receive, new cameras and video equipment that our students are really excited about having. And finally, just our data to drive instructions and initiatives. We are going through curriculum mapping with Dr. Thompson. We have peer observations with our teachers, site visits. And this year, through that Mass Insight, we were also given... our sophomores were given the opportunity to take the PSATs, which will not only help them be prepared for the SATs, but also gives us more data in terms of who and what students are ready for AP courses for next year. So, again, I just wanted to talk about the brief achievements or the achievements in a brief bullet point presentation for you. So, with that in mind, before I move on, I will introduce Todd Schaefer and Jill Tostie to present their athletic and music budgets. So, Todd, do you mind?
Yeah. I do have to thank you for the additional money that you gave last year, the extra money transportation. We actually were able to do two extra shows during our March Man competition season that put us in a position... I'm sorry. Put us in a position where we were able to go on in a very strategic place. And I know it sounds kind of funny talking about strategy in Marching Man, but there actually is. So, we were able to go on last at national championships, and you always... that's the coveted position to go on. And so, the way it's done is by seeding, and the more shows you go to, the better seeding you get. And we were able to go to two additional shows last year, which was fantastic. In addition to the new instruments, which Mr. Dudek mentioned, the big changes... not like big changes, the only things that are different for next year, what I'm asking for, are the supplies music program, which is for extracurricular music supplies, the upping the March Man lineup, only because we have a vibraphone that the frame had to be re-soldered four times this past season. Unfortunately, some of these instruments weren't really made to go onto football stadiums, and the frames start to get rattled around, and they come apart. So, hoping to get a new frame for a vibraphone, as well as additional money for writing and fall show music. And I think there's one fee in there as well, so... Can I answer any questions?
No. I always have questions. So, the $116,000 on the budget needs, that's in addition? Is that more in terms of the number that I'm looking at here?
From last year, it's an addition of about $3,400.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
So, Jill Tostie, Athletic Director.
Hi. So, a couple of things that... one thing, I guess, that I'm kind of asking for. We... you guys have helped us redo our fitness center, and it looks amazing. The kids really enjoy it, and I've been asked by a lot of athletes and non-athletes to try to figure out a way to keep that open after school. So, I did request to put a fitness supervisor in. That person would be on a stifened position, working three days a week from 2:00 to 4:00. This will allow kids to... from, like I said, not just athletes, a lot of kids, you know, really don't really have much to do after school, so having them get into the fitness room and get an workout in would benefit them health-wise. It also, I feel, would help our athletic programs. You know, some of the football players right now really don't have a place to go. They may not be able to have a gym to work out, and they don't play an offseason sport, so having them wait until the springtime, when the coach is available to go in there, this will kind of help them get more ready for this upcoming season.
What would the stipend cost be for that? What do you have set aside?
I did. I put it in here. It was in... Hold on, sorry.
I only have this. I only have the uniform.
Yeah, the only page we have from here is the uniform sort of layout.
Oh, right. So, weight room supervisor would be 2,500 stipend for that, and that was from the contract. It was already listed in with the coach's stipend.
So, but that's not a position that's in the contract right now?
No one... Yeah, no one filled that position.
But is it in the contract? Fitness supervisor? Or is it under coach?
There's a spot that says fitness, a weight room supervisor, a fitness worker.
Okay, so it's in the contract?
Yeah. Previous years, I guess, they've had someone working there, and in the past couple, they haven't.
Now, this wouldn't conflict with any MIAA regulations, you know, coaches outside of season, anything like that?
Nope. You're allowed to, if, let's say, an offseason coach wanted to do it during their offseason, conditioning is okay. They just can't physically be coaching their kids, like with soccer or something like that.
Skill.
Skills, yes.
And the capacity of the fitness room currently would be enough to handle this 2:00 to 4:00, three days a week, plus any teams that would be in season at that time? I mean, do you expect an overflow?
I don't expect an overflow. I mean, in the springtime, when we do open it up, when we do have a couple of our football coaches, we'll open it. I want to say there's maybe 10 kids top there. I mean, we put classes down there that have up to 30, 28, 30 kids, so...
So, any way you can... not today, obviously, but maybe a year from now, give us like an attendance, rough number, how it's turning out?
Yeah.
You know, is it three kids? Is it 300?
Sure. You guys do have the uniform cycle.
Can you just explain this a little bit?
Sure. So, every year, we're trying to do... look back at the old uniforms and update them, and...
So, what did we purchase last year?
Last year, we purchased, or this budget right now, we purchased soccer uniforms for girls.
Girls, maybe.
And middle school basketball uniforms, and that is it. And then, this coming budget, baseball is up for their rotation, and I did add in some additional warmups. Some of you may know that some of the sports have a little more updated warmups, while others are still wearing warmups from like the 80s. So, trying to kind of get just a generic warmup that is not specific to each sport, having just ordering them in bulk, and they'll just say BMR Athletics on it, and teams will get distributed them, they'll be numbered. And then, if they don't come back to the coaches, players are accountable for the cost of them.
So, can I just ask a question? By looking at this, it looks like JV baseball has... the last time they received uniforms was 2001, 2002? Is that accurate?
So, how the school... how the JV teams work is when varsity gets their uniforms...
They shuffle down.
They shuffle down, so...
So, 2011, 2012 is their uniform currently?
Yes. From the... they have the old varsity uniforms.
Now, is it like... is it an approximate similar dollar figure year after year? Because it looks like some are larger than others.
Some are. Like, if you take softball uniforms, they're a little more expensive than basketball uniforms. Some sports may... so for soccer, girls, soccer this year, instead of getting them white and purple shorts, we just did the purple shorts. They were allowed through the MIAA just to have one solid color shorts versus a home and away. It kind of just depends on the sport.
Yeah, because I'm looking ahead to next year, the varsity football. Is that going to be a big ticket? Compared to what we're doing now?
So, what we're thinking for football is hopefully we'll have a lot more numbers, and our uniforms that we have now, unfortunately, they discontinued, so we can't order the same exact ones and just add on. So, we are probably going to be looking at needing a couple more for our program. So, we would just do varsity, and then JV would have the older Adidas uniforms that they have now. So, it wouldn't be a whole 40-something, it would just be a whole varsity set.
Do you have just an approximate dollar figure, say, for, you know, baseball and the 50 warmups for this year? How much money is that roughly?
I know basketball... the girls' basketball team purchased stuff through their own... their own team fundraised for it, and they were $80, top and bottom, so... if we... right now, we are still within our contract with Adidas. If we... I'm thinking of looking elsewhere. And I know Nike, that's who they went through, and they were $80 for top and bottom warmups, which I didn't think were... Adidas were a little more on the pricier side.
I just have two concerns before warmups. I'm looking at the JV baseball, and it looks like their last uniforms were 2011, 2012, and the boys' track and field were 2010 and 2011. Is that correct? Because that's... I would be worried about them before the warmups, just... I mean, I think our school needs to be represented by, you know, our uniforms and just being looked like we're put together. So, we're kind of getting up there with numbers, and I don't see that on the projected... I see 2016 baseball, but I don't see the JV, so...
So, when we would order the new... how it's been done in the past is when we would order those new baseball uniforms...
And it goes down to JV. I get that.
Yeah.
JV would get the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
So they're getting them, so then, those two thou...
They would get the two thousand eleven and the two thousand twelve.
Right, that's the last, that's the uniform that they're going to be in.
Yes.
Right, so that's my...
That's old.
Yes, that's my concern before the warm-ups.
But that's not as bad as the...
Track and field.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I will just add, I, I know, when we were looking at the cycle, if you look at girls volleyball, I think girls volleyball per cycle by year, they should be upcoming as well, but I think we're also looking at the condition of the uniforms. You know, I think the girls volleyball team, their uniforms have lasted and are, are in pretty good shape. So if we're, you know, I think, I think the cycle allows us to see when was the last time things were replaced or renewed, but, you know, if we're looking at that cycle, I would say by year, and I don't have that in front of me, I think volleyball would be up for next year as well, but looking at, at the condition, we don't need to buy newer or new girls volleyball uniforms as of right now, based off of the condition. So, I don't know where baseball is.
I just don't wanna go to a, I don't wanna go to a game and see, you know, gold numbers and white numbers and purple numbers in one team, and I've seen that. So, that's my concern, is that if I see different tops, different bottom, it kinda looks like, I, I think we need to be put together. No matter what level you're talking about, whether you're talking about middle school, whether you're talking about varsity, whether you're talking about JV, whether you're talking about track and field, or even band, we wanna make sure that we're put together. So, you know, as long as, you know, this confirmation that, you know, those, those uniforms are, are all the same, and that we look cohesive, I think that's really important. And, and that's why my concern is in two thousand eleven, you know, you get a lot of baseball players, you know, I just, I worry about that. And, and two thousand ten for track and field, I mean, that's a lot of people, so I do, I do worry about that.
I do like the idea, but sort of a generic warm-up that can be used by multiple teams, it's a good idea.
Versus, I mean, that way they wouldn't have to buy each individual sport. I mean, I kinda stopped ordering warm-ups for some of the fall sports, because they get expensive, and having one set, you know, that will carry on throughout the year, I think seems a little more reasonable.
We will go through them faster, though, doing that. But, so will these cover, the fifty you have here, they'll cover the boys' and girls' track and field?
That's not the uniform, that's just a warm-up.
No, this is warm-ups. The new war, the warm-ups last purchased were boys' and girls' track and field, it doesn't even vary, like varsity JV, it says ninety-six, ninety-seven. So, you have fifty generic warm-ups coming, it'll cover...
Yeah, it should cover at least, probably, next year's team or, I mean...
Right. So this year, they'll be wearing ninety-six, ninety-seven?
Yeah, but that's, that's what they're doing for indoor track right now, and it's just, it's unfortunate. I think, you know, that's where we are, and we're just looking at it from a fiscal standpoint. If it was up to us, we would love to purchase three hundred warm-ups.
Well, it's important to us, too, as long as we know that.
Just, I mean, rather than buying, like, like, three hundred, do it in spurts, so it's not...
Right, and they don't have to be replaced at the same time.
Yeah.
And, and there, there'll be uniforms that won't be updated, or they don't have that style, because we're gonna go with a simple black, with Charger Athletics, with our emblem on there, and it is what it is. Yeah.
Any other questions on uniforms?
But, the reason we're asking is not to, you know, hassily or anything, but it's just that, this is one of the first things we always hear, is, oh, look at those teams, they have, you know, four different uniforms out there, and I paid my user fee, and da-da-da-da-da. So it's a very high visibility item, so that's, that's the first thing we hear about all the time.
Understandable.
So, that's, that's why we bring it up.
I do have a couple highlights from so far in the year. I don't know if you guys know our boys' indoor track team, our Duvalley champs, they ended their season eight and oh, which is a huge accomplishment for the boys' track team. The girls also had a very great season, they came in third in the meet, they did have a couple injuries, and they finished their overall season seven and one. So, I mean, the track program has definitely improved a, a great deal in the past, well, I've only been here two years, but from what I've heard, they have improved a lot in the past couple of years, and I definitely think the coaching staff and the dedication that the kids have is what shows. And I think that's it, if any, yeah.
Okay. When the athletes came and spoke to us back in the day...
Yep.
Whatever day that was, or whenever that was, we, I, we asked them, several of us asked them what their needs were, and one, football, I remember saying that more access to the, to the weight room, whatever, fitness room, you call it. So you've addressed that, but soccer said an increase of membership, like, we need more people, more interest, and, and you had said something about, or somebody had said something about volleyball, and maybe trying to do a summer camp and kind of get people in, cause there's no, nothing in this area. Is any of that reflected in here?
Uh, not...
To try to do some summer camps or activities, or...
Um, usually what, well, for example, I can just take, I can speak for field hockey, so what me and, you know, a couple of my captains have spoke about is doing little clinics, and that would be on, on our team alone, like, we wouldn't be asking for money for that. And just kinda having different summer sessions, and I know soccer also does little clinics like that, kinda things like that, just to get our interest with the younger kids. The girls' basketball team, they actually do open gym on Sundays with the younger kids, so it's kind of, they're starting this little sister bonding with the high school kids and the middle school kids, and...
But they, all the teams do that on their own?
It kinda, it's more of, of a thing that the coaches will start on their own.
I wonder, they have a really big thing for basketball, I believe Coach Rowe puts something on in the summertime.
Charger camp.
I see the signs everywhere.
Yeah, the, they do a pro, a basketball camp for one week in the summer. This year, they had a lot of numbers where they had to use two facilities, so it's definitely...
But that's all facilitated by Coach Rowe, right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
And again, I think that's all sustained by their own program, so it's, it's not an additional stipend or anything that goes into that budget. I think Coach Rowe does a nice job, he's been doing it for several years, but that's, I think a lot of that's all volunteer work, or, and that goes right to the boosters and gets paid for the program.
That's unfortunate. One other thing that was mentioned when the captains came to us, from the fall sports only, so we haven't gotten to winter and spring, cross-country, so they have a great need for a new tent.
A tent, yes, and I did, yep, I did put that into the budget.
Okay.
One of the pop-up tents.
Perfect. Is one enough? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it should be. Well, there are twelve runners on the team this year, and nine of them are seniors.
So, yeah.
So it could be interesting next year. It won't have a lot of depth, it won't need a, a big tent.
We do have a couple eighth graders, though, hopefully they'll stay.
Yeah, you're right. Hopefully they'll, they'll roll up to high school, you're right.
Yes.
But actually, similar question to that, sort of like what Jane was saying, almost all the sports say that they're basically really hurting for numbers for athletes. Is that true across the DVC?
Um, I know for Douglas, for track, they, they were really low in numbers this year for their girls' team. Girls' basketball, same thing, so I think it depends on the school. I know Douglas got hit kinda hard, and that could have been with everything that's been going on with their athletics, and their fees went up to like, I think, three hundred dollars a sport.
They've been, they've always been low, even when I played, they were, they were hurting for numbers.
Um, I know a lot of the other DVC schools do do waivers to add their eighth graders, so...
You think they may have to do that, or maybe explore some kind of co-ops to keep things afloat?
Uh, well, for, I would, I, I would like to either, if we needed to do waivers, co-upping, I mean, we have our co-op with football, so, I mean, if we needed to, we could.
I actually had a question about the co-op with football last week, that I didn't mean to direct to the wrong person, but, so the HopeDale comes to us.
Yep.
Do they pay their user fees to their school? And does any of it go towards our program? Or is it our user fee to our program?
They, they pay our, our user fees.
I believe they pay our user fees. Yes, they, they come in and they pay Mr. Dushar.
It was just, and where do we stand with hockey?
So, we did have a co-op with Bellingham, they recently dropped us, we had no numbers last year. I had Coach come out to the cafeteria to introduce, interact with kids, I had announcements, and the need wasn't there. So they, unfortunately, we don't have that hockey program anymore.
We do not. Are we exploring other options?
For hockey?
Yes.
Um, I haven't yet, I haven't really gotten many people interested in it, I, kind of going off in a different direction, but I did get a couple questions about lacrosse, and possibly doing a co-op, maybe within the next year, with some of the teams to add that, for, for boys. We do have an extra game, or extra sport for girls right now, so I wouldn't be adding both...
Is that fall?
That is in the spring.
Okay.
So, I would hate to take numbers from other sports that we have.
I don't know if we can afford that, numbers-wise.
And that's, that's my kinda thought process, too, is I would hate to take, that's baseball, that would be baseball, probably some tennis, and possibly some track, and looking at our numbers, it doesn't look like we could. But I think just seeing what kids would be interested in it would be kind of a way to start first.
Just quickly back to hockey, I know there's middle school kids, there's quite a few that do play, how, like, do they have to be in high school before we can look into teams again?
Uh, so if they're interested in playing, they would need to be in the high school level, so we could see what, who we could co-op with. And I mean, I, what it comes down to is, some of the schools aren't gonna wanna co-op if we just have four or five kids. They're gonna want eight or nine.
Okay.
So, and it, it's hard, cause it's, I mean, obviously, you know, we want to keep kids here and keep them in our, in the sports that they enjoy playing, but we don't have...
Could we put out a questionnaire to the middle school to see what we do have for numbers, so at least we know what could be coming?
What could be coming, and how we're gonna support that, so at least we have that, that information ready, instead of when they get to the high school and then looking. I think to be proactive on that, we could possibly have eight or nine if we, if we send out a survey, just asking, you know, who plays hockey, or, or some ball sports. It's good information to have.
That's a good idea.
And how many kids did we have from HopeDale for football?
We had about six.
So that's a small number, we liked them, right?
I know. One of them graduated, so I'm hoping we'll get a couple more. Some of the kids that are playing from HopeDale are still grandfathered in their other co-op with Millis, so we did lose a couple kids that way.
Any other questions for... I actually had one back for Mr. Schaefer, cause I apologize, I stepped away. Are you keeping the two shows we added last year?
Yes.
You still have the same, and I apologize if this is a repeat, do you have the same amount, or are you increasing?
It'll be the same amount.
Okay.
I think that, gauging kids' tiredness, I think that was the absolute max that we can do, cause having two or three shows in one weekend can be a little bit much, so I'm gonna cap off of that number.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Excellent, Todd, as well, the, I know you sort of declined on the Gator Bowl again, is that option still open, potentially in the future?
Yeah, they, they expressed an interest in having us come whenever we possibly can, so...
Open-ended, good.
It was very, which was very, it was flattering, but...
No chance they'll come to us?
We'll have a bowl game out there, it'd be great.
About Mr. Kraft, and see if he wouldn't mind hosting it.
Exactly.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much, Jill and, and Todd, thank you very much. Back to Mr. Dudek.
Thank you. Since I'm not here by myself, I'm gonna ask Mr. Cameron to come up as well, cause he's gonna transition into, to the middle school budget as well. I do apologize for my sort of dry sense today, I'm not feeling very well, I've had the luxury of staying home for the last three days, so my social opportunities are with you today, which is a great, just, it's so positive to be here, but...
I'd like to share my opinion.
I'm throwing it out there, cause I, I just, I don't feel that, that razzaz that I typically have, and I just, I'm just, I'm here to get this done, but I appreciate it. Again, you, you could see what happens when we have a commitment of our athletics and, and our, and our music programs and our arts, you see students who, who really strive, and, and they really put everything out there, and, and we have a lot to, that, that we're proud of with all their accomplishments. So looking at the next slide, I just wanna go over quickly, sort of where I am in terms of our budget for, for the FY seventeen budget. This is some quick bullet points, and then I have a next slide that, that gets into the numbers, so just bear with me on this, this brief commitments for FY seventeen. Review of staff, we will be proposing, and this is more of a district's position with the middle school and, and high school, is our library media communication specialist. As you know, we've been pushing for this for the last three years, and this is a gaping hole that we have, is that we do, we do not have somebody who's truly caters, and their position is the integration of technology, to help our students and our teachers sort of figure out the whole system of where we, we're going with technology, with a lot of the apps that are out there, and just to truly, we have access to, it's just we don't have someone helping our students truly manipulate what is out there, and we are looking for, again, a, a library media communication specialist as an additional staff to the high school, but this would, again, help with staff members in the district anytime that they needed help. So I look at that more of a, as a consultant for outside districts, or outside schools. I will throw out a new teacher for our technology engineering, and I, I will get into why I feel that we need that. Again, our commitments to extracurriculars, so I'm, I'm hoping that you heard what our athletic director and music director mentioned today, and, and keep with, with their budget. In addition to our student clubs, we have many student clubs that are out there, I'll add student council and, and our National Autress Society, that does a phenomenal job with what they're doing. Our advanced placement offerings, again, with our mass AP initiative, it's a ten thousand dollar commitment for this year as well, as, as well as next year, but there's a lot that's going on there. Our hope is that we offer an AP computer science course next year, and an AP statistics course, and so that's what we're looking to do there. Again, we're looking at elective offerings, additions for what our students are looking for and our interests are. Integration of technology in the curriculum, I think, is key and fundamental, I know Dr. Thompson talked about, one-to-one, from a technology standpoint, and this is something that you'll see in our budget for the high school. Again, I, I look at it as one-to-one learning, I don't look at it as one-to-one computers or technology, but one-to-one learning, to me, is using technology to really look at how do we innovate, create, differentiate everything that happens in the classroom and, and outside of that as well. Meeting the demands of today's society, so, again, looking at STEM or STEAM pathways, a, a lot of the course offerings that we have are, are STEM-based, I would love to see a STEM program, so that's something that I'll, I'll quickly address as well. Authentic learning opportunities, you don't see this in the budget, but allowing internships or certification programs for, for high school students, I think, is going to be key when we talk about authentic learning. And then always, which I think is key, is our social emotional health, with mental health needs, and, and keeping our guidance departments, our school psychologists, providing PD opportunities, and, and holding on to those, those good staff members that we have, because mental health is becoming a priority, it's always been a priority, but it's becoming a sort of a forefront for a lot of districts and a lot of states in terms of what's happening within our schools. So, in terms of numbers, again, we're looking at additional personnel of the technology and engineering, and then a library media specialist. I think in order for us to really add AP computer science and AP statistics, and adding a few more engineering and technology courses, or programming, game design, right now, I, I would like to propose... right now, I, I would like to propose, um, having another teacher in that, uh, in that department. Again, could I play with numbers to see if we could truly make it work where we could squeeze in an AP computer science or an AP stats class within what we currently have? Um, I, I think I, I will be able to figure that out once we have a few more numbers, once we start, start looking at our master's schedule and seeing what the course offerings are and what the interest is. But with what we're looking to do, um, realistically, I think that's something that we need to explore and, and think about, so that's why that's in the budget.
So that's the technology engineering?
Correct, yes. So, um, I'm not sure if this is in the, the budget, the district budget. 'Cause I know this is something that I proposed really late in the game. But this is something that I think is gonna be really important for us to be able to offer those additional course offerings. I mean, we went from four AP classes to nine, uh, without adding anyone. As you recall from last year, we had six math teachers. We dropped that to five so that we can get a fifth science teacher. 'Cause last year we only had four science teachers, so we never added an additional staff member to that realm.
Did you get that science teacher that was posted, like, at the beginning of the year? I think there was a posting for science or?
Wasn't for the high school.
Nope.
I don't believe, um, 'cause those, the, we have.
You have five. So we never hired a teacher last year?
Oh, we, we did hire a science teacher.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, but that was in place of that, that math, the sixth math teacher that we had and that, that we dropped.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
The, um, the AP enrollment, I'm just wondering, um, how was the AP enrollment? Like, what are the average numbers on some of the classes that we, or that you, you, um, implemented this year?
Um, so, just, I'm, I'm trying to remember these numbers, but, so AP, like AP chemistry?
Yeah, like, what is that class size roughly?
AP chemistry is new. We definitely pushed a few kids into that.
Okay.
Because we had, uh, I believe, the year before, three or four chemistry classes altogether in our, in our, in our, our school. Adding that science teacher, we were able to add CP level chemistry classes. So AP Chem, I believe, has eleven students in it right now. Um, our AP Physics, which is brand-new AP class, I believe, has about ten. Um, we were able to double up our AP English, so last year we had AP, I believe it was Language, and then we alternate years with AP Lit. We offered both sections. Um, so AP Language and Lit are happening at the same time. I believe there's about forty-seven in both of those courses. Um, AP Cal, uh, this year was a large number, we have twenty-two in there. Um, we are, we're offering AP World History, which is a really popular course. I believe there's about twenty-five in that class.
You're doing pretty good with being sick, I'm telling you, these numbers.
Well, it's just, it's, you know, those numbers are with the grant. They're always asking for those numbers.
Right.
And what are we doing? Because we do have Saturday sessions where kids are getting involved. Just last weekend, we had, uh, an AP English Saturday session where the students came in and took the mock exam, and we'll get the results, and then at their next session, um, they'll go over the results prior to taking that exam. Um, so we have ninety-plus students in AP right now, which I, which I feel is.
I know we had that conversation a couple of years ago, is how to get the students into those AP courses.
Sure.
That was framing my question.
Yeah.
So thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else in terms of just the staffing or personnel?
Sort of a related thing, um, VHS is fairly small at this point. Um, what, what are the, uh, courses that kids are taking in VHS? And is there enough demand in VHS that it would trip over and maybe cause you to add that?
Sure, so currently we have twenty-five seats, uh, each semester for VHS. This is, I believe, the first year we actually have a waiting list, um, for VHS seats. Um, some of the courses that students are taking are economics, um, politics. I think someone's taking a, a French culture course. So there are some AP courses that they're taking as well as those outside classes. There was one, uh, biological sciences, zoology, um, ecology course that, that students are taking. Typically, those are for juniors and seniors, but we're seeing that, that there, there seems like there's more of an interest there. Twenty-five seats per semester, um, but this is, again, this is the first year that we had, we had a waiting list. We did purchase a few additional seats to get some of those students that needed, quote, needed a course, um, in there so that they were, that they, they were ready to apply to their certain schools that they were looking at. So, um, as of right now, I would, I would be okay with our twenty-five per, uh, because there is a fee for it, for VHS. Um, in, in addition, we would have to commit one section for one teacher to be able to teach that. So right now, we have Mr. Curran, who's a department head in history. He teaches a VHS course, so he has one less class to teach. In addition, he has a prep class for that as well. So we lose a section of, quote, teaching physically, um, in the classroom at BMR. So, um, and I, I believe we do the same thing at the middle school, that they have twenty-five each. Okay. Again, in terms of our department needs, um, you'll see what I put in quotes, um, were, were the, the numbers that our department heads felt, um, was necessary for them to have Chromebooks in their own classroom, or not for their classroom, but for their department. So I, I, again, I think ideally, um, we would love to see a one-on-one learning. Um, I believe the proposal was eight, nine, and tenth graders to have a Chromebook in front of them. Um, we have a few pilot programs in, in the last couple of years with our iPads. We have a cart of Chromebooks that are, that are involved. Um, our school has gone, quote, Googleized, so a lot of our students are using Google School, Google Classroom. Our teachers are doing that. Uh, but in order for that to truly happen, we need to have something in front of our students. And so our department heads are, uh, truly, uh, using this budget, um, as a way to, rather than replace textbooks or obtain supplies or software in the classroom with a cart or two. Um, so when you're looking at the, the physical budget, um, i- i- if you look at social studies, I mean, they had $200 just for supplies. The other sixteen thousand was for, I believe, sixty Chromebooks so that they can go and rotate amongst their, their peers in that department.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
A question? Um, and this might be more directed towards Dr. Thompson. Um, so if they are asking, let's just use social studies for sixty Chromebooks, we're essentially just, that would be for the, I mean, if we look at all of these, you're talking, if we follow the initiative for one-to-one and nine to ten, then these Chromebooks will essentially be for eleven and twelve graders.
Well.
I mean, really, 'cause they're one-on-one, so they're carrying them in nine and ten.
Mm-hmm.
And so the additional, so this is in addition. So if we were to say, let's just say sixty Chromebook social studies and, I don't know, like, fifty from out, I mean, you're talking almost more than we have in population, right?
Well, I mean, I would, I would, um, argue against the department's proposal for Chromebooks. I think a lot of the departments, department heads are already looking at Plan B, if I could say that. They're, they're really stressing Chromebooks, they want Chromebooks.
And there's no, there's no doubt we need them, I just worry that.
We're asking for too many when you combine both things together.
Would it be better to do eleven and twelve? Would it be better to add eleven and twelve in and?
And take this money away.
Everyone in the building has a Chromebook.
I mean, I, I would say, again, I think this is a conversation for, for all of you to have. If we did have eight, nine, and ten grade Chromebooks, one-to-one, um, then I think this is definitely something that we would look at.
I mean, I, I would be, and this is only me, but I would be in favor of having like a, I mean, the, the additional cart here and there after supporting those two grades and then having carts, you know, available for other grades. But I, I just worry that overlapping, I mean, we definitely are doing Chromebooks and we're definitely, you know, that is our priority. But looking at this, I just, I'm just questioning if this is overlapping or not overlapping, so.
Well.
I mean, this is like, this is like two hundred Chromebooks right here.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my quick math, my common core math.
It's two hundred and four.
Thirty, sixty, ninety.
So why, why wouldn't we just kinda, I carried the tens.
Okay, so just carry the tens. What was the, um?
Well, that was my question, is eleven, twelve, this would essentially be eleventh and twelfth graders, because if we're gonna follow through with the nine and ten, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm looking, that's, I just.
If we just increase it to eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Aye.
And I, I would say that they, when they proposed this, I would say that they were independent to or from what Dr. Thompson was putting out there.
Okay.
So they weren't entirely aware of, of what Dr. Thompson was proposing or where that was going to go or will go. So they put that in there as, again, this is, this is a demand.
Yep.
They would much rather receive Chromebooks than, you know, update something else that they have in their department. I mean, we do have AP English textbooks that are, that are in their budget. Um, we do have AP stats textbooks that are in there, so we're not looking to sort of eliminate, you know, renewing our textbook cycle as well. But this is just something that I think is, again, was independent of what Dr. Thompson was looking to do for the district.
So I guess when we have that conversation of Chromebooks, that we just keep in mind that the, the impact of those Chromebooks, they need to be had within the, you know, foreign language and math, so we need to keep that in mind with also pushing forward that nine and ten. Right, that's where you're?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And there is a cost here that they don't have in there, which is the, the management software.
Is that in yours? That was in the one that was presented?
It's not in here, so that's, that's another eight or ten dollars or.
That's not two fifty?
Oh.
Yeah.
It's not in there.
So that's where you get up to like two fifty of these.
Oh, I divided by two fifty, so it's two hundred and four at two fifty.
Yeah, so.
There's definitely a need, we know that.
Okay. Just stressing that with, and again, it was the department's, um, I, I think it's a great, um, I don't wanna use the word initiative, I think it's just, it's a great way to look at.
To move us in the twenty-first century.
Learning, and, and, and there's, there's a lot of advantages to that just from a differentiation standpoint. Um, and students are embracing it, but at the same time, when there's hurdles or obstacles or it's not easy to get onto something and you're asking kids to do innovative things, it's very difficult to be able to do that, um, without having something in front of you. So, uh, uh, I think that's, again, is a need for us.
Well, I, I. I guess, um, from my perspective, I think, you know, I, I haven't sat on this committee all that long, but, um, you know, we, we seem to have focused on, um, early elementary, you know, we need to get the curriculum, we need to, and we put dollars and dollars in staffing and new programs and, and we have a level one high school.
Mm-hmm.
And we put very little into that. We expect a lot from the staff that's there, and, and I am amazed that we don't have a Chromebook program. So I don't know, I mean, I, I'm looking at this and I see a huge need for those two teachers. And increasing that rigor and, and, you know, I don't know what STEAM stands for, I'll be honest, but STEM I got.
The A is arts, just arts in there. It's, it's, it's who you.
Well, that's why it went right over my head, 'cause that's not me, but anyway.
Only enhances everything else.
Yeah.
On the, on the alphabet.
There you go, there you go. But I just, I don't know, I think. I think we need to.
Yeah, you're right.
I can't read your mind.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I mean, you're right, I think, I think with, with, with technology, with, with, with a, um, with a, um, the cable money that we have coming in, we have to start building the program and, and not stop in every year, doing more and more. Um, I'm, the only thing I didn't hear about, that I have questions about, is, um, all the AP classes that we've added, I'm particularly thinking about science, are, are there things that we need for, to update our science labs? Um, and, and, and could we get that broken down? 'Cause I think that's a must too. It's great that we have this track, you know, moving up with AP stuff, but, you know, and we gotta search out some grants, uh, through MSBA or something to get a couple of science lab grants, um, for next year, whenever that cycle is.
Yeah, we've talked about that a lot.
We just, it, it, those are have-tos that we just have to, have to do. Uh, but I'm wondering, to get us to that point, how do we, are there things that I'll see later on in terms of science lab needs, you know? Don't hold back. You know what our labs are. I mean, those are original labs, if you want to do a, you know, an old-school movie on, on what labs were, that's a great place to look. I mean, w- we have upgraded, we, we are looking to, um, a lot of our vents aren't working appropriately, so, uh, Ellie Conrad did put that in our budget in terms of, uh, w- working with electricians and plumbers to, to figure out what's going on with our labs. The gas access that we have in our chemistry labs is, is limited, so those are things that we've been talking about. I mean, she assures me that the lab supplies that she has is enough to get through our chemistry and physics and a lot of the AP, not mandated, but preferred labs that they have. But I, I, I won't disagree with you that our labs are outdated, and that's probably gonna be a part of the, the NIAS report is upgrade of, of science labs. Um, and where we need to be to meet the needs of our kids and, and the equipment that we do. I mean, we do have the luxury of being able to go outside and, and do outside labs at UMass Med in Worcester or go out to Brown and, and see what they have, um, and be able to explore that a little bit. But the upgrade of, of labs, and I think we'll see that with our feasibility study, um, I think is going to be important if we, if we ever look to upgrade that. Yeah, I just think we need to have, so, I need to, I know, I'll obviously see a list generated of, of stuff, just some have-tos to get us to the point where we're applying for some grants or MSBA to get, uh, a couple new science labs, and then we don't give up on it. If it's not this year, it has to be next year. If it's not that year, it has to be the, and just keep, apply every single year, uh, until we do it, 'cause it's great. W- we're, we're increasing all this rigor, but then I, then I, I hear, and I know it's, it's frustrating, I know it's frustrating for, for Mike, that, that, you know, we're increasing the rigor and availability, but then we're just getting by with the equipment that, you know, I used to tease Mike Buckley, it was the damn chair he, he sat in that you spin to move up, move up the, you know, those don't exist anymore, you know? So somehow we have to, we have to kinda get moving on that, and, and with everything else that's going on, that has to be kinda at the forefront. I know I'm preaching to the choir here too, so everyone's. I, just the, the last slide that I have, because I, I promised someone that I'd be brief. I don't know if I've gotten that far, but, um, the, the last piece that I, I wanna look at, again, we have STEM-based courses, we have STEM-based classes. I would love to see a STEM program at the high school, at the middle school, at the elementary school. Again, this is very last-minute, short notice. We've done a few site visits to some area schools in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. There seems like there is a, a common program that some schools are using to try to engage the community for a STEM, I almost said STEM-based again, but a STEM program. Um, and one of those is called Project Lead the Way. Um, so there's, there's something that Oxbridge just started, um, last year, but there's a few schools up in New Hampshire that have really gotten into. Again, this to me is a different way of, of learning, it's a, it's a pathway. Um, there's, there's curriculum, there's supplies that goes along with this program, and it's something that I think we should all look at. This, again, is just a sheet, but at the bottom, there's a live link to the PLTW. Uh, there's a quick video on that, but I think it's something that we should look at. So they have three pathways at the high school. One's on engineering, there's another one on biomedical science, and then there's a third on computer science. And that could be tied into our AP level classes. But that, what, what's neat is that that goes down to our, our K through five model, and it also, there's something that happens in the middle school. So this is, um, something that, again, um, I just found out about last week. Some schools are getting into it. I'd love to be able to do some more site visits on what they're doing, and that they're not just the technical schools. The ASAPits, the BBTs, the Worcester Techs are doing this. But there's also, um, other just public schools that are getting into finding avenues for kids to engage them in learning. And I think this would be a, a really great way and a segue from the mass AP insight to now, let's look at this pathway to engineering, computer science, and biological medicine. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, um, in, in terms of that budget presentation. Does anyone else have any questions about? But please, please look at that, it's, it's something that, again, I'm not proposing for this year because I think, again, it's last minute, but it's something that we should start thinking about as, as another avenue for our students.
I have just one more question, and it might be Dr. Thompson again, but it's just spinning my wheels now. You know, we're talking a lot about Chromebooks, um, but I guess my question is, you know, I'm wondering what the teachers are using to support Google Classroom, and, you know, what is there, what do they have? Do they have the, you know, the old computers or how are we supporting? We're talking about the students and their, in the Chromebooks and, you know, have we updated anything for the teachers to support that initiative or?
I mean, the, the, the teachers have the computers in their classroom and most of them have computers at home.
Are they, are they outdated though? Are they, are they outdated though?
About, I mean, the thing about going Google is that it, it is device agnostics. You can use Google on anything.
Right. Right.
So, you know, I mean, all of us are using it on our computers right now, in and around the classroom.
So, we do have, we do have-
Right. We do have. I would reckon to say at this point, 70% of the teachers in the district have taken either a Google PD Day or an after-school workshop in Google. So, they have, there's a good amount of base knowledge going on there. We just sent one of our Google leaders to a big Google thing down in Old Rochester on the PD Day. It was all about integration. Her head, I talked to her today, her head is still spinning from Friday. You know, the, I mean, learning how to use the apps is one thing. Learning how to integrate the apps to move education and learning forward is a whole nother step. And Mike did bring up the, you know, the, the library-media integration person. That is key to this. And, and, you know, obviously at the high school, but obviously be able to be a resource between them and our Google leaders throughout the district. You gotta have the devices for the, for the kids to use. And you have to have teachers thinking about how can we make learning better using all sorts of things, not just, Google is not the only answer.
No, I, I meant, I guess I meant, like, the actual, like, device itself.
Technology in the classroom.
Yeah, the, the device itself.
All of them have computers. The computers are hooked up to smart boards in, in every classroom in the district.
But I think-
Now, I did mention last week that we're having, they're arguing, they are getting old, and we're struggling with replacing projectors as they die. But we are, we are doing that. We are committed to that.
Okay.
I think it's also important to make our teachers mobile, too, if we're making our kids. And just making sure they, with all of the technology, we're now expecting them to deliver to the kids, to have a device, whether it's an, you know, a, a Chromebook in the headcount for the teacher in the classroom, or something a little more advanced that they can-
Right. I mean, the, I mean, the Chromebook is, is good, but you can do everything you do on a Chromebook on a regular computer. So-
Right. But they can't take the computer of their classroom to, you know, so, I mean, I'm sure they have devices at home.
Yeah, I'm sure they have the devices at home. We, we have piloted Chromebooks with our leadership team and with our Google leaders. So, they're working around. We're practicing with the management software and that sort of piece. The other piece that is in the budget is, is that third technology person. We're going to bring all these devices into the district. The, the two folks we have now are barely keeping above water. And at certain times, we're underwater. When we had our server die, when we came back from the winter break, everything else in the, in the district stopped. And they are still trying to catch up from the tickets that were generated two weeks ago. So.
I really like the sound of this, this one.
Yeah, I'll just, can I just jump in on that? I mean, you know, there's a big news, news item with GE coming into Boston. The main reason why GE is coming into Boston is not because of tax breaks. It's because of the kind of education we have in this area and the workforce we're developing in this area. And these pieces, all these pieces are part of that. And we need our students here in BMR to be able to access that new economy and be part of that workforce going forward.
That was well said. That was good. Did you just pull that one out?
And, and it's about taxes.
Jeez.
I was rehearsing.
Taxes.
Jeez. Did you get that one, Mike? Did you get that one? So, you can, did you write that down?
So, if I could actually just speak very briefly about the Google Chromebooks and the Google rollout. Because I've, I've been in this district where smart boards and iPads have been purchased and placed in front of the educators and the teachers. And I'll be very blunt. Some of them were like, what do I do now? That's not the rollout that we, we have going on under Dr. Thompson and Osiris. The rollout that we have going on is an empowerment of the teachers to take the lead in this initiative. And the kids are walking into these Google leader classrooms, and they're getting jazzed about what's going on in Google Classroom. And they're bringing it to the other teachers in the building. And we know students adapt to technology very, very quickly. We know that this building, during the seventh snow day of last year, we had 90% of this building in Google Classroom in, on our last snow day. So, that was a quick kind of dipstick into this building and whether or not students were ready for this Google initiative. So, for Chromebooks to land into this district, eighth through wherever, the teachers are ready. The students are ready. And it's a great framework for my very brief presentation in a sense of, I feel like that this presentation is evolving, where year after year, I'm sitting next to, you know, as a secondary presentation. But the assistant superintendent is as much a part of this presentation, especially at a middle school versus any other level. Because I feel necessary in this next 10 or 15 minutes to really embed things that are initiatives in the elementary years and initiatives in the high school years. And there's not much of anything that I'm going to be saying that should be granted to this school, the middle school, exclusive or in a vacuum. The Chromebook, the initiative, I absolutely am asking the committee to support that starting in eighth grade. We need more pathways in this, in our learning community that are educational pathways from Hartnett to BMR. And I think a Google initiative is a pathway to that. We have that with band. We have that with sports. And it's time we get our education programs connected at the high school and our, in our eighth grade. And I think a Google platform and our, our eighth graders handled Chrome, handed Chromebooks that they bring up to BMR is a good first step. And, you know, my Google leaders, they're all situated mostly in seventh and eighth grade. So, again, the rollout, you know, for the Chromebooks and for the hardware to be delivered, they're ready. You know, and the cost, you know, what we're saving, Google, the Chromebooks is playing the long game. You know, I ask teachers, okay, you know, give me what you need in terms of curriculum initiatives and add, I'll add that up. And then I ask them, you know, what, what would we look like if we had a one-to-one initiative? And understand, the Chromebook is a third of that cost. Because you eliminate the cost of textbooks, you adapt very quickly with curriculum, you're connected to different platforms. And I'm going to mention one in just a few minutes for STARS that the kids will be always connected to. So, again, my presentation is really in support of district initiatives. The only thing that I, I guess I wish to speak to, and I'll take 30 seconds, is a continued, a, a very gracious kind of thanks to the committee for their continued support for the teaming concept at the middle school. You know, I feel it necessary every year to mention just how paramount our teaming concept is at the middle school. And that we hold on to that. And we appreciate the fact that that is a middle school philosophy. And the, if the day ever comes that a conversation happens that we eliminate the teams due to personnel or due to staffing, we quickly transition to a junior high school, which is a completely different philosophy and one that's never been supported by a committee in the six years that I've been here. So, there's not much in way of personnel in this presentation that I'm going to give. But I wish to just offer the continued support of our teaming, our two-team model in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The other piece that I just wish to ask for continued support on is the after-school program here at the Hartnett Middle School. I think we're at the point where the promotional machine that is Hartnett Middle School doesn't really have to get too much more behind the after-school program. I think our learning community really knows what's out there. But in speaking with the parents who are choicing in, that continues to be one of the first things that they share, that differentiates our, our district with other districts or other middle schools. So, last year, I'm sorry, this current year is the first year that this committee and the school budget has supported the after-school program. Before that, for five years, the Hartnett PTO had supported pretty much 100% of that program. And again, we're exclusively talking about after-school clubs. So, I just wanted very quickly to ask and, and share with all of you that, again, a part of the middle school budget will be for the after-school program as well. Moving ahead to the slides, and it really is just a, a STAR presentation. And I think I'm going to be so brief that I will offer this. If you would like myself and kind of the STAR gurus in the middle school, which happens to be the assistant principal, Dr. Laporte, and two paras, actually, the Title I paras, which are Gwen Swanson, a former math teacher here in the district, and Lauren Boyle. So, Gwen Swanson is kind of in charge of the math stars. Lauren Boyle is in charge of the ELA stars. If you would like them to come back, and what you're going to see in the slides that I present is just a reinforcement of how much STARS have meant to us at the middle school, but a supportive STARS K-12, and certainly down at the elementary school as well. So, again, if I'm too brief, you know, when I'm done in about six or seven minutes, certainly you can ask questions of me regarding STARS and what it might look like in the elementary years, what it currently looks like now in the middle school. But we can also come back and make a more formal presentation with Dr. Thompson as well. So, the next slide is just what STARS is. Now, I don't really want to be redundant because I feel like I made a presentation on STARS and the MCAS Improvement Plan and how it looks in the middle school. So, similar to the after-school program, I think we've almost taken a page from Grant Wiggins' Backwards Design. We've put something in place, and then I'm coming to you formally to ask for the support. But I believe what I'm giving you and what I can share with you is almost real-time information in how it looks for our kids and our staff. So, five years later, I came to you and said, you know, well, I came back because I did ask for after-school program money five years ago, and I was turned away. You know, we found a way to make it happen. I think we're very successful, and we came to you. The STAR program that we currently have in place at the middle school is at the cost of $7.60 per student. That is for math stars and for reading stars. That grants each student a license to have an account. However, that account really just provides an assessment for them, a real-time tool, data tool, for our teachers to dipstick quarterly into how each student in the building is doing regarding what was the MCAS and what was the state standards. We can certainly shift that to Park, and we will need to shift that to Park, of course, and then MCAS 2.0 when it comes. The fact that we have real data really drives our discussions and our PLC time at the middle school. It drives our discussion in our data teams in the middle school. And it drives our discussions in the RTI process at the middle school. And I have to say that before this year, a lot of the discussions that are happening in the teams, a lot of the discussions that were happening in RTI were just hapstone stories of students struggling with, you know, the only data to really back that up was teachers' grades and MCAS scores. And the concern with MCAS scores, of course, is the fact that we're dealing with information that was, you know, four, five months old, you know? And for, you know, fifth graders and for eighth graders, we're dealing with, you know, a science test that was the, you know, ninth session they took, you know, in a period of six weeks. So, it really wasn't data that we felt we could embed almost immediately in the, in the instruction, which is what we're doing currently with STARS. So-
How often do the PLCs and the data teams actually meet?
Yep. So, the data team is about once a month. The PLC times are once a week. So, the STAR happening now at the middle school, as you know, in a part of the MCAS Improvement Plan, we have a new master schedule in place at the middle school, where in seventh and eighth grade, because we're in a pilot stage right now, we have an intervention enrichment block. I shared with the committee back in, I believe, October, that the intervention block targets during the school day, those students, when they don't perform well on STARS, it grabs, it gives the teachers, the core teachers, but the intervention teacher, real-time data to really evolve and change the curriculum so that when, in that intervention class, when the student is kind of retested every couple of weeks, so when I say retested, they go in front of a computer for maybe 15 minutes, the test is adapting to that student. And then every report a teacher gets from a student who has taken even a 15-minute quick assessment on STARS is, you know, a lot of different links of different support that that teacher can receive. You know, stories, you know, if the, if the student is struggling with word, word attack skills in the context of a reading, then not only is the teacher told that in the STAR report that is delivered to that teacher, but then resources are given to that teacher as well. The license that we currently have, that is, again, $3.80 per student, the resources are very limited, of course, which is why Dr. Thompson has put forth a presentation that I'll hint to and share with you in a minute, that opens up what's called a STAR 360. So, much more support for the teachers in a completely different kind of platform for teachers, I'm sorry, for students and for parents as well. But I'll talk about that in just a second. I would be remiss if I didn't, again, mention the enrichment classes. So, not only are we doing what research suggests, and that is we're targeting students who are in need of intervention during the school day. Okay? And I gotta make, make sure that is crystal clear. When I came in as assistant principal seven years ago, I was charged with a task by the committee to put forth an intervention program after school. It doesn't work in the after school. And the research is very clear about that. We have this intervention embedded in the school day. And again, the STAR's platform is really supporting the teachers in that intervention. But again, I do want to share, as I did in the MCAS Improvement Plan, you know, what has been a win to the win is our enrichment classes within the building as well. We're looking currently, going into the third quarter, because students were assessed for the second time in the second quarter with STARS, we're looking at a total of five enrichment classes in seventh grade and five enrichment classes in, in eighth as well. That's in, we're looking at four intervention classes in seventh and four intervention classes in eighth as well. So, under the school council, and I shared this with all of you in October, you know, we had a goal to not only target those students who are in need of support, but target those students who are high-achieving students as well. And I think we've been able to do that with this intervention block, this new master schedule, and the tool that is STARS that is feeding us the data for this intervention block.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I actually have two. Number one, what is that enrichment block, you know, look like? Is it project-based or something that we can support, you know, budget-wise? And number two, what are you doing for the students that are not enrichment or not needs improvement, but that, you know, during that enrichment, during that block?
Okay. Your first question, as far as funding for, like, the enrichment classes, I can certainly, and they'd be thrilled that this question was asked this evening, but I can go to those teachers and ask them-
Well, I guess I'm just wondering what it looks like. Like, what is enriched, so you're, they're doing enrichment. Is it project-based enrichment? Is it, you know, is it something that can be supported by the, the budget?
So, right now, what it looks like is teachers have taken, you know, kind of things that the curriculum touches upon, but doesn't allow the teachers to really expand upon. For instance, there's a Holocaust enrichment class right now that's happening in the eighth grade. You know, there's a Google Classroom enrichment class that is also happening in the eighth grade. So, you know, teachers are able to use the resources that they have currently. You know, we have one, we have our foreign language teacher who is also licensed in Italian. So, she is using her fifth class to teach an enrichment Italian class. We have our health and wellness teacher who is teaching a fifth class of Fitness Frenzy, which is a project-based class where they build their own PE cla, their own PE class and their own PE games. So, we have a lot of teachers who, historically at the middle school, and this is not just true of, of Hartnett Middle School, but middle schools across the Commonwealth, that fifth class is always kind of a mystery class for them. And in the past, it has been used, you know, based upon Title I information or MCAS scores, you know, let's put all the kids, you know, in, in this, what's been called historically in this building, a skill-building class. Wendy, your second question, as far as the students that might not, you know, the data suggests they're not in an enrichment or they're not in an intervention. We're right now adapting, and because we're in our pilot year, we're kind of learning as we go. We're not just using a cutoff score- We're not just using a cutoff score. We're using their growth percentage that is given to us by the STAR report. So, you know, for the students who, you know, if we establish a cutoff score, but the growth percentage in their growth, you know, then we're actually connecting with their parents and we're making a recommendation. And I've actually been pleasantly surprised in these conversations that the guidance staff and I have had with these parents. You know, I have had a conversation with a parent where we recommended a enrichment class, and they, and the parent felt that the growth wasn't quite where their goals were as a parent, and they suggested to us the intervention class. And then the other, you know, the other types of conversations have happened. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure they're not in, like, a study or like that time on learning is still moving forward.
Yeah. There's, there's nothing opposite these enrichment or intervention classes.
The approximation of the license per student of $7.60, is that annually?
Yes.
So you, so every year, that's an ongoing-
It is, and again, I have to stress, that is bare bones.
That's, that's Star's license.
That's the basic, right.
Right. And what I propose is not-
Is the 360.
Right.
And so what does that up it to?
That's, I want to say about $23 per student. There are, there are grades between there.
You know, I would, I would share very strongly, though, that, you know, because that 23 per student is being proposed not just for the middle school.
Right, 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 right.
And, you know, you add that up to the total number of students district-wide, and, you know, that's a high, high cost. You know, so obviously, instead of looking at the 360, you can do what we kind of did in, you know, à la carte kind of thing. You know, choose the resources. You know, I think what's missing now, which you can get with STAR's Accelerated Math and Accelerated Reader, is that student portal, that their account, they log in at home. Parents have access to that account. It's kind of like our own iXL or our own, like, assistments, where, you know, the amount of support and curriculum materials that are available to teachers and to students in Accelerated Math and Accelerated Reader, which is also a part of the 360 quote as well, is when just you open up the Pandora's Box, but with the good connotation, of course. So, you know, I think there's a, you know, if there's a charge from this committee, you know, to take that $23 per student, you know, charge and say, you know, well, we can't do that, so let's just support the middle school, you know, what they want and how they want to build the Stars. I would say no. I would say, let's look at what can be most impactful in the elementary years. Because this data available to the middle school is, is just so important for us to build a foundation when they enter this school. In fact, you know, I know the FY16 money right now is very tight. And I'm sorry I'm doing this publicly, but I will be going in front of the superintendent and assistant superintendent, asking for the $7.60 charge per fifth grade this year. Because we find it very important that we assess the fifth grade in late spring in their transition up to sixth grade. So we have data-driven decisions that we can make. And please, this is not just a placement decision. In fact, sixth grade, we're not making any placement. And there is a typo in this that I should point out. So... So in the second, on this slide here, the second bullet point, it says, "Extend STAR math and STAR reading to complete universal end-of-year screening with grade five, incoming grade six to support scheduling decisions." You know, I really should have caught that, because if I'm a fifth-grade parent, that may concern me just a little. Stars is as much driving the curriculum, the, what the teachers are teaching, and how the teachers need to adapt to the different levels in the classes. I'll give you a concrete example of that. Even in a core class, if we test all the fifth graders in spring and have that information available to the sixth-grade teachers in fall, a sixth-grade teacher is gonna get a report that shares the different learning groups that that teacher can organize his or her class in and target those learning groups with what those learning groups need. So if it's for an ELA teacher, if there is a group within her class that really needs, you know, support and comprehension, that sixth-grade teacher's gonna have that day one in September. We're not gonna be waiting for MCAS scores that are just raw, that again, kids took in fifth grade. So it's just, it's paramount to where we're going, you know, as a middle school, but more importantly, as a district. I think I pretty much shared what's on the last slide, just kind of aloud. Again, I just find it important that, you know, the initiatives that are happening in the district, I feel it necessary that, you know, we get to a point in this budgetary process that whenever the elementary principals are up here, I'm here in spirit, and I'm in support of what they're looking. And I'm eventually, and crossing my fingers, hoping that that initiative finds its way up to the middle school. Envisions is a good example of that. You know, when Mike is here for the third year in a row, and I'm asked by my own staff, you know, if we're going to recoup a technology position that we lost four years ago, I'm sitting here in support of the library-media position that's at the high school because I know of the impact that that will have in the middle school. So I think, especially being in the middle, I don't think there's a principal that sits closer to the assistant superintendent and takes a look at the elementary budget and says, yes, that looks great, and looks at the high school budget and says, awesome, you know, and just hope that some of it falls backwards and some of it falls forward. Because to just propose things that are in a vacuum here alone just doesn't make sense anymore.
Questions? Actually, I have a question for both of you. It's kind of a tough one.
There you go, Mike.
During the summer and even beginning of this school year, we definitely had some turnover in staff. Some of our not rookie staff, some of the experienced staff. Is there anything we can do to prevent that type of thing from happening in the future? What more do we need to sort of support and compensate our staff? I should have prepped you for that one.
Be honest.
Yeah.
We need to know.
Because, I mean, we're in negotiations now. You probably know that.
You know, it's, it's, you know, I can say this for myself. You know, it takes me a little longer to get here, and I drive through communities where it comes down to sometimes the bottom dollar, you know, and how I'm supporting my family. I'm driving through communities where my colleagues are probably getting between eight and $10,000 more than I. So that's as candid as I can be. But I'm speaking, but I'm, I think I'm speaking for the teachers as well. You know, I think if an exit interview happens with the staff that we're losing in this district, one of the first things that they will say, and they're probably, you know, one of the last things they'll say is, I also, you know, I'm also leaving BMR, you know, for a district that is paying me four or $5,000 more.
I will echo that. Just examples of that with, with teachers that come to me and are really heartbroken. You know, they're, at some point, they need to look because they're hearing from their colleagues that they're making four, five, six, $7,000 more. I mean, I had, I'll be honest, I had, I think, two years ago, I had a PE teacher who left, was fighting with himself about whether or not he should leave. And he goes, he said to me, "Mike, I'm making $8,000 more at the same step." So when you look at where our teachers start at step one, bachelors, and you go to a neighboring district 10 minutes away, 15, 20, 25, and it just goes up from four to six to eight to $10,000 more, I think we seriously need to look at where we have our teachers start with their salary. I mean, again, I don't, I don't think that, you know, some, some people may say, well, is it, is it the school culture? Is it, is it negative? I will tell you, I think that's one of our biggest strengths. I mean, I'm personally talking about the high school because I'm not sure how it is anywhere else. Our teachers work well together. They have positive relationships. They love the kids. The relationships that our teachers have with students, I think, is, is phenomenal. I mean, I hear it all the time when I have people come into the building and just see it in the hallway or in the classrooms. I think that's, the biggest piece is, again, the fiscal, fiscal piece is the salary.
Is it those early steps in bringing in new people? Or is it all the steps all the way up that just, across the board, aren't high enough?
They're not leaving as much. The, the higher up, they are, the-
Stops.
The longer they stay.
But we did have some from the middle and upper steps that left this year, though. It was not just the bottom that left.
No.
It was middle and upper. We lost a few as well.
Again, this is, you know, staffing, I think, is, um... Some of the staff were, some of them left by choice and some of them weren't. Again, I think we demand excellence, and if teachers aren't doing that in that first three years, it's a very difficult decision. But, I mean, I see it more personally when we have teachers that leave. They're leaving after their fourth, fifth year. I think that's typically when teachers are looking. Is this a district that I want to stay at? And if I do, can I sacrifice the salary? And that's what I hear more, more often than, than anything else. We don't have, personally, disgruntled teachers leaving because of something that we are, aren't doing, or, you know, their staff, where they don't feel like they're being supported. Again, I think it comes down to what Justin's saying, is that, that salary. And within 10 years, they're making, yeah, $80,000, $90,000 more within that span. And for some, that's, 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 that's a serious move.
Okay, so to address that, we, we all know we can't have it all. We all know we come from towns that, that, for whatever reason, struggle with the dollars and cents. So we have an incredible technology initiative, budget proposed, a real need to address staff, staffing proposed, some new... Where are the, where is, where's the priority in your mind? What's the, the greatest need? You know, if it, if it came down to going one through 10, and I know it's a tough question, but if it's one through 10, you know, do we, as a school committee, push for this technology and media person and the extra person for, you know, Osiris? Because that's where education is going? Or do we push and say, you know, bottom line, our staff need, you know, up their steps or up their percentages or... You know, ideally, ideally-
Is that your question?
Ideally, you know, we'd have it all.
You're absolutely right. That, that, it's, it's our job to do both. You're absolutely right, Justin. Right.
But I, I would think we know-
I wasn't trying to be flipped, though.
But we do know for, for a fact, one instance that happened over, when we were trying to hire a teacher, and the offers were made and declined. And, you know, it, it makes you, we feel it. So, you know, is it quality over quantity versus...
No, I, I will say, you know, I think the middle school is blessed because of the facility. I, I really, we haven't had really much turnaround. And when I get to a context that Erin speaks, I've had people who have accepted the offer by the superintendent but are very candid in saying they're taking less money. But that's just at the middle school, because of the facility, because of the technology. I think the culture, as Mike said, has something to do with that as well. And I don't know if the other buildings, you know, I think if you're mentioning priorities, you know, in terms of personnel and, and technology initiatives and things like that, I think a priority has to be, you know, when an Allen, when and if Allen does his presentation over, you know, the needs at the high school. Because I think that's a, is that a segue? Mr. Superintendent.
You know, the questions go right to the core. And in my three-year plan, a very key piece of that was personnel. And that is exactly what we are speaking about. And we, we certainly cannot expect us to be able to make up eight or 10 or 12 years of ground in one three-year slice. But there's a lot of pieces that go into liking where you work. And at the last open, I said, be proud of where you work, be proud of what you do, and be proud of who you are. And if you do that, then the rest falls into place. And I get a lot of very positive feedback. And I agree with, with both Justin and with Mike, that we have a lot of teachers who, who really, and support staff, who really put in their all, because that's the calling, that's what we do. But there are also folks who need to balance for, for all the reasons that we do in our own lives. When one and one doesn't equal two, it only equals one and a half, something has to give. And, and so that piece of it, we are looking to address. And I think that we are also addressing that everybody that works at BMR in this district brings value to all of our students. And the reach is long, and sometimes we don't even realize it. That the reach when we teach is just incredible. And, you know, we have, we have plenty of, of evidence to support a district that is, is really, really becoming known for the changes. We have that being understood by other collaborative towns, by other BVSC towns, that we are moving in the right direction. I, I hope that we can continue that momentum. But that three-year plan, everything in there is exactly what we need. From personnel to, to renovating the high school, to Bill's point, and, and to JFK. And when we put all of it together, the art is in trying to do it all at the same time. And that is really because we always come up to that plan over time versus immediate need. And, you know, in 18 months, we've made a lot of progress. We really have. And, you know, it's because of a tremendous amount of hard work by 290 or so folks. And not everyone can be, can be in a, in a role that will be everything to them for long-term. And we all make those decisions ourselves. But I think that we are, we are really reaching out to everybody. And I hear it from, from staff throughout the district, that we are moving in the right direction, that this is a really good place to work. Are we perfect? I don't think so. But are we getting better every day? And I think that, you know, that is being recognized, and even at statewide meetings, I, I hear it. So, but I echo exactly what the questions are right on, as is the answer.
I mean, it is about, and I agree, and I am preaching to the choir here, but, you know, I am always gonna be, and we've neglected this, and I'm gonna be the first one to admit it. It's about taking care of people. And we constantly talk about teachers, which we need to take care of. But we also have a team of administrators. We have a leadership team in the central office that we have to recognize, trust, and value. And, and we've lacked at that in the past, you know, and we need to do that. It's about, you can have the best technology you want, but if you don't have a great teacher in there using that technology, you just got paperweights. And I think we got a few paperweights around. And I think we have to, we have to recognize that. And, and, you know, if we're not, if we're not moving forward with all these initiatives, then we're moving backwards as far as I'm concerned. I'm sick of moving backwards.
Yeah, similar. I love to sit through the budget presentations because I like to see where you'd like us to go. And I agree with everything you said. Absolutely do. I mean, glad to see the, you know, the LMC finally being staffed. We've, that's been an enormous hole for a long time. And, you know, the AP, the expansion has been tremendous. You know, it's more than doubled. And I think if you look at the list of the colleges the kids are already getting into, I think those AP courses- And I think if you look at the list of the colleges the kids are already getting into, I think those AP courses directly translate to kids getting into great colleges. They really do. And getting dollars from those colleges. So that's, again, I, I love seeing the, the budget presentations. We like to see where your heads are and where, where we're going. And it's, it's great. I, I like everything that, that you guys have brought forth. So, thank you.
And I think we'd also be remiss not to mention, we did mention it last Thursday, but Mr. Cameron was not here. The, the effort in every, in everything that went into the International Space Station contact. I mean, we spoke highly of it last Thursday, but you were not with us, so.
And now have motivation.
Can you tell me where it is in that four-hour? Towards the end?
Front page of the newspaper, I mean, the tweet from
The astronaut.
The astronaut was, I, I signed up for Twitter that night just so I could see it. I saw it, but I wanted to see it and I wanted to like it. I haven't gone back.
I, I was one of those retweets. I retweeted it.
You retweeted? So, I mean, we, we definitely see everything that you're all doing, but to actually feel it and experience it brings it even closer to this table. So, I definitely wanted to say thank you for that again.
Thank you. I, I have, it was the highlight of 16 years in education. Very, very cool.
I mean, I'll, I'll just add this and, and I'll end with this. I, I do appreciate all the kind words from, from everyone because at, at the end of the day, I think what, what keeps us going is, is hearing positive feedback from, from our school committee, from our colleagues, from families, from students and so forth. Because I think that's what really gets us going and, and motivates us to get up every morning and, and make a change. You know, I will stress that I think there's, there's so many great things that happen in our schools. And, you know, the one thing that I, well, there's, there's several things of, of why we do site visits. One is we want to learn and see what other districts are doing. But two, just hearing the feedback from our teachers and our staff about what they see in our buildings that they thought was happening. I, I mean, I, I hear everything that, that people are saying. For me, it was all about the feeling. What do I feel when I walk into a building or a school or a community that sort of just minimizes everything else? I mean, yes, money is important, technology is important, the, the look of, and look of a building is important. But I, I'm, I'm a product of a, of an old school that had phenomenal teachers that really wanted to push me to be who I was. And, and I think that to, to me was truly why I am, why I, I am who I am today because of that commitment and that positive feeling that I had every day when I walked into that building. Do we need building upgrades? Absolutely. Do I want a new lab as a bioperson? Absolutely. Do I want technology? Sure. But, but at the end of the day, that feeling that our kids have and our staff have when they walk into the elementary schools and middle schools and the high school, I think, is what, what drives, drives me more than anything else. So, but again, I just want to thank you guys for, for, for giving us the positive that we all need and, and we want to give you that back. I know you guys are working hard and you have late nights and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to, to get us to where we, we should all be, so.
I guess he answered my question. He said, I guess he answered my question.
Thank you.
It's about culture, it's about people.
Any other questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have school committee. We have the superintendent evaluation. And I don't want to jump the gun, but I think we might finish it tonight. Did everyone get their printout of our, the, our parts of the evaluation, the survey? So, actually, I think it's really good to, we can start from where Mr. Dudak left off. And he said how, you know, it feels good to get the recognition and, and I don't know if we've done that enough for Alan. So, I think, I think we should have a very positive conversation and let him know how much, you know, we've appreciated everything that has been done in the last year and a half. Do we just want to open it up for a general discussion on what we have in front of us or?
Should we, should we go over it and give the rating just so that people at home can see, can be part of that?
Is this available to them on the?
Well, I just put it together, so.
We're going to have a, a
This is going to be, this will, this will be posted.
Public document.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not right now.
We're going to put it in together in a summary. It's going to look a little different unless my mom says it, you know, question, but I think we're going to summarize it for the public. Should we go through each one? Do we want to go through each one?
Go through the overall rating maybe and if someone wants to, to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, we can just, we can just question one. We can go over what the question was and let the people at home know the, what the rating was.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Do we want to just go around the table starting?
Or do you want to wait until someone, until people have a chance to look at it or?
No, I, I, I want to move forward. I want to move us forward. I feel like this should have been done, you know, however many.
Steve, would you take the first one and we'll just go around?
Sure, we're, we're taking from this?
Yeah, we'll read the question and we'll do the rating and we'll just go around.
The first rating is about instruction, quality of effort and work. And it says, sets and models high expectations for the quality of content, student effort, student work. District-wide and supports administrators to uphold these expectations consistently. And, you know, between all of us, the rating was proficient with 85.7 percent. And I, I think just sort of summarizing what a lot of the, the comments were, I think we're finally building and putting together a team. I mean, Alan, you know, has, has grabbed Dr. Thompson and Osiris and, you know, a lot of the administrators you brought in have really built the team. And I think that's, that's what we need. And we're finally getting some traction. Was that what you're thinking, Erin?
We'll go around the table until we get to number nine.
All right, question two, data-informed decision-making, improvement of performance, effectiveness, and learning. Uses multiple data sources to evaluate administer, administrator and district performance. Provides administrator teams with resources and support to disaggregate assessment data and assist them in identifying student who needs additional support. Proficient rating, 71.43 percent.
Question three is standard two, law, ethics, and policies, ethical behavior. The superintendent reliably demonstrates sound judgment, reflecting integrity and fairness, protects administrator, student, family, and staff confidentiality appropriately, and expects all district personnel to reflect this practice. Proficient, 71.43 percent.
Okay, and question number four was laws, ethics, and policy, fiscal systems. The superintendent develops a budget that aligns with the district's vision, mission, and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources. And also proficient with 71.4 percent of our rating. And I think it was just mentioned that Alan has a, a strong background for budget and fiscal and, you know, he's definitely fit that role as we needed.
Can I just do a couple of them?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you.
So, family and community engagement, professional culture and communication skills were strong areas, you know, proficient in both. Overall rating and, you know, comments around this were around, you know, you, 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 you have to build a strong community, starting internally and then working your way out to externally in the community. And Alan's done, you know, a, a really good job at, in these areas.
I just, I, I think wanted to comment, I'll continue on, but I wanted to comment because I think what people aren't seeing is even though we say 71 percent proficient or, or 72 percent proficient, for a majority of these, the additional scores are in the exemplary. So, you know, very rarely has the committee felt, and in some, you know, there's one or two percent of needs improvement. But, you know, really where, like the one that was just read, you know, it's a pretty high exemplary area in terms of developing that community and the professional culture and sharing that vision. I think it's been shared very well with the community, with, with the administrative staff, with the ta, you know, any, the, the open door policy, I think, is working, is really well. So that's, I guess, why I didn't want to read just numbers because I don't think they tell anybody anything. I think some of the comments do and where those numbers are trending, I think, are just as important as the actual number itself. So, but moving on, managing conflict, conflict resolution consistently employs a variety of strategies to resolve conflicts in a constructive and respectful manner. Models this behavior for the administration team and that's proficient at 85 percent.
Managing conflict consensus building. Builds consensus within the school district community around critical school decisions, employing a variety of strategies. Proficient at 42.86 percent. Needs improvement at 42.86 percent.
The only thing I would, I like to add to that is that there's, there's a good balance of accountability and support. I think that's needed in, in, in the community and internally and, and externally. You know, I remember Alan, when he interviewed, I, I wrote this down and I always remind him of it, which I don't need to because it's always in his forefront, is that he always talks about the litmus test that he has. And if everything decision makes goes through what's best for students. And I know that's always at his forefront and that's one of his, one of his main strengths. So, there's always going to be times where you manage conflict in, in a school district this size. And, you know, there's going to be good moments and there's going to be not so good moments. And you do a good job of balancing that out of accountability, holding people accountable, and reminding people about litmus test and, and, and you model that, I think. And it's, it definitely goes through your, your leadership team within the district as well.
And if I just, I, I just want to make one comment that this will be available and you'll be able to see the percentages. And I think just the purpose of the percentages was, you know, getting that overall rating. So where did that overall rating come from? And I have to say that I, you know, I, I, you know, I put all the data together and I have to say that there were no outliers. You know, we were very close in all of our, you know, our, our system of how, how we answered the survey, which I think, you know, complements us well. So, you know, just to point out, those percentages is just based on an overall rating of that, of that particular question. But this will be available to the public with the comments on it and you will be able to see where the other percentages are coming from. But just in terms of overall rating, you know, we, as a committee, rated him in the proficient range on all the standards and indicators that were agreed upon between the superintendent and the school committee.
Yeah, I think some of that, I probably should have said that right up front. It's really a four-point scale. It's exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and then unsatisfactory. And we didn't even touch unsatisfactory, of course. That was not even a factor. You know, the majority of them, yes, were in proficient, which, which is a good thing. That's not meant to be negative in any way. I think any of the parents who are getting standards-based report cards at home know that. Four, three, two, one. You know, how come my kid didn't get a four? Um, four is way, way over and above.
And as a teacher, you see.
Three is, yeah.
The teacher's the same way. You know, we're based on the same type of rating and that exemplary is, is, it's tough to get.
But it, it's the same old thing that, everyone can't be exemplary.
Yeah.
I mean, that's
But he does have some.
He does have, yeah.
He does, he does.
Yeah, and it's trending that. I mean, I think it's important to say it's trending that way, you know, from our, our perspective. And I think the only one where it wasn't trending that way is, you know, kind of managed conflicts consensus building. And, you know, sometimes the superintendent has to be the superintendent. You know, sometimes it, it's not popular, it's not pleasant, but, you know, sometimes we need decisions to be made. And that's, you know, I would say that's why you get the big bucks, but, you know, I don't quite, but anyway.
That's why he has the big chair.
There you go. That's better.
But speaking of that, let it go.
Don't.
We do have to talk about, we're not going to do it now, but I do think we have to put out an agenda, an executive session, and then share it out here around how we are gonna, we just talked about the human capital throughout the district. And we have to take care of the human capital that meets with us as well. So I think that we do have to put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, we do have an executive session next Thursday.
We do.
So we can certainly speak to that. And then, and go from there, I think.
Yeah, we need to do that, though.
Based on, we, we said we were basing his evaluation on data and test scores. And I think we have everything we need to be able to make decisions. And I don't think that you have any disappointed committee members sitting here tonight. So, thank you for your time. We definitely know the number of nights you have spent out, the endless hours every day, and definitely the commitment to the kids because that's what we needed.
And you get us a lab, I'm telling you, it's going to be exemplary.
It's in that three to five-year plan.
And a Chromebook in everybody's hand.
With management of it.
And, and I just have to say, first, I appreciate the hard work that the committee puts into this. We know that it's not easy work. I am gratified by a couple of things. First and foremost is everyone, your students are terrific. And whenever there's a day that is not going smoothly and you can walk down the hall and a third grader waves at you and says, hi, Mr. Himmelberger, there's nothing better. And more of them are doing that as they learn how to pronounce the last name. And, and as I am here longer, and I, I just want to tell parents that you have terrific students. And when I stand at doorways and welcome kids in in the morning and every single student waves, smiles, says thank you for holding the door, it is a reaffirmation that we have a really good part of our job and that is watching kids develop. And the other thing I'll say is that I know that our towns can be a challenge to work with. I have had nothing but cooperation and respect from, from all town boards, from all department heads, from, from everyone. And I know that there are folks who rightly so have a wait-and-see attitude. But I think while people may not always agree with everything at first blush, they certainly know they can get an answer and that I will always be accessible and accountable. I enjoy this district. I enjoy this work and I look forward to working to continue to deliver the very best education for all of our students within the resources that we have. And I think that the last 18 months, we have certainly seen that we can move forward. And I think that the, the team is starting to really come together. And it's not just the teachers in one building. It's not just the custodial staff in another building. It's not just the leadership team once a week when we meet. It's everybody is starting to understand that we all can't do our jobs if someone else isn't doing theirs. And that is the crux of it because no one, no one person in the district can make an impact. You really rely upon everybody else. And I look forward to, to great things and will continue to work just as hard in my second and third year as I did in my first. And I, I thank, again, the committee for all their cooperation, all of their support, and, and sometimes all of their understanding. So, I look forward to continuing the work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or? Our last public forum, obviously, we're moving on. And school committee forum.
Just like to thank Evan for coming out today. It's always great to see them, you know, they, they can't get enough recognition. I was glad that they were able to put together the program at the State House. Thank the principals for coming out and doing a great job in their presentations. Wendy, thanks for pulling together all the superintendent data. I know that was a thorn in your side for a while.
I'll copy Mr. Cameron with a ditto on Steve. I'm all set, thanks.
I, I just want to echo something Mike said and I, and, and Justin both said too. And I know we had the opportunity to evaluate Alan and I think we are moving in the right direction, but I think, David, you're a big part of that too. And so we don't evaluate you, but, you know, clearly, we had a lot of feedback with the, you know, we're too hot, top-heavy, hiring too many administrators. And I think it's only been positive and I think we have, you know, really to build on that with. I think we have, you know, really to build on that with the additional technology person or whatever it may be that we end up with need, but I think it's been very positive. So, thank you for your efforts, too. And if you'd like me to evaluate you, I'd be, you know, glad to do that. Just kidding. And congratulations to the band, I'm sorry I missed it, I tried to run in here in time, but caught some of them on their way out. I do think that's phenomenal, and I hope as much success to our athletic teams, to our academic teams, robotics, whatever is out there, putting their best effort out, and I'm glad we support that in any ways that we can.
I ditto, I've read everyone's comments. I do want to recognize, you know, Dr. Kat Pauver again, because you can't emphasize enough the heart of a person, and, and, you know, I knew, I knew of her, but when I read, I read it when we got the information when it happened, it doesn't surprise me. And I think we have a lot of that going on here. You don't have to be nationally recognized to have heart, but I think for her, it, it says a lot about who we are, and that's, that's important to remember.
And I definitely want to thank the band for coming out, I'm glad we could finally get them in here, they're so popular, we, we're on, you know, on the bottom of the list, but that's okay. And we forgot to ask them about the cupcakes, but that's okay, too. And, you know, getting the jackets for the remaining 40?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. We don't want to go without that, so I'm glad we can also do that. And we meet again next Thursday for our last budget presentation. And of course, if there are any other agenda items, please send them to me. We definitely will have the-
Executive.
The executive session to talk about Alan, and we're, we're going to have them after every meeting just for, while we're in negotiations. So, anything else you want added, please send it to me, and we don't want it to be four hours, but we get it done. And I think I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Wendy, second?
Second.
Second by Jane. Good night.